Welcome, everyone. Welcome to the Speaker of the Month, Speaker of the Council, Speaker of the Session meeting, Monday, May 15, 2023, at seven o'clock. Please stand for the Speaker of the House. Thank you. Mayor Linehan?
Here.
Counselor Page?
Here.
Counselor Kendall?
Here.
Counselor Payton?
Here.
Counselor President Sheldon? Counselor Smith?
Here.
And Counselor Martinez, excuse me. Thank you, Laurie. This evening, let's see, next up is our consent agenda. We have a few items under that particular agenda item. Obviously, the approval of this evening's agenda, the approval of May 1st Council Minutes, Resolution 2228, the county and county natural hazard mitigation plan, and Resolution 2230, the IGA, the Washington County, for public transit improvements. At this time, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes that we need to be aware of? I mean, I also want to just ask, clarify, and then I could, Andy, on the item of Resolution 2230, I don't know why I didn't catch it earlier, but the, I just wanted to clarify, I was reading through the resolution, and the actual resolution and the whereas. And in the memo, it mentions for a connection in North Connector to a wave on the actual resolution. It shows right share operates West Link. There's, there's no connection between right connection and Northwest Connector to a wave in the whereas in the actual resolution, and I just wondered if that was something that needed to be clarified, or will that be one of the same? Is that a correct?
I do like this one. That was our rare, very poor mayor point here. Doug did that.
There he is waiting.
He's there online.
Oh, hi. Okay. Can we ask Doug to clarify the additional?
Sure.
Hi, Doug.
Hi. Um, it's coming in a little bit spotty, so would you mind repeating your question again?
Yes, so in the actual memo, you do provide, you say that the city is served by two transits, right connection and Northwest Connector, the Tillamook Wave. So read your memo. But then when I actually look at the resolution, it doesn't reference those two entities in the resolution. It references right share. And so it's the step, I'm sorry, it's the third whereas in the actual resolution. And I just wanted to double check to make sure that was correct.
Oh, well, so that was a final, that was the version that they made before the actual final draft, and they sent the final draft over on Friday of last week. And I believe that is corrected in the final version. Despite those few errors, the final version is substant- substantially similar to the one you're looking at right now. And it's, it's still the same agreement. So we figured, instead of having our attorney format this into a resolution again, that it would be fine to just present this instead.
So they, this defined as the attorneys. When you say they reference, you mean the attorneys with the resolution, correct?
Yeah, yeah. Well, the, the attorneys that we had formatted this into an ordinance. We gave them the latest version that we had, and then after we already gave them that version to format into an ordinance, the county sent us an updated final version.
Okay. And Andy, I, but for clarification, though, I'm just, is right share, I mean, it says that it operates West Link, and West Link is not something that kind of comes through the road planes, but, but, you know, I know it's all sort of convoluted and connects to each other, but I want to make sure that, that the new resolution and spread is, you know, written and correct.
All right, Doug will pick you up. I'll see first thing. What Doug was referring to, we had a last second change to the IGA itself on the county, the county resident knows folks, nothing substantive, just a few grammatical things. But in the resolution itself, I think it's written this way because the county itself does contact with right share. Right share has several connection points, West Link being one of those. So that part is accurate. What's, maybe what you're alluding to is that the Northwest Connector, the Tillamook Wave does not show up in this resolution. If you'd like that in there to memorialize that, we can add that to this, whereas.
But it's all good, but it's still all connected to each other.
Yeah, but they're two separate entities. Right share is, is a product of, it's a separate entity that contracts with county to provide this climate service, and then Northwest Connector is a separate service.
And I would add that it's, is specifically specified in the recitals. If you look in, in the bowels of the recitals, if you will, then it basically covers everything in that green room.
I would also add that West Link is the service that operates from North Plains still, under ride connection. And it's mainly addressing the stops served by West Link. It just so happens that the one in front of the senior center is also served by Northwest Connector.
All right. No, I appreciate that. I just, you know, didn't look at that, catch it sooner, and just wanted to clarify. So thank you for that clarification.
Of course.
Any other, any other comments regarding the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
All move to approve the consent agenda for May 15, 2023.
I'll say.
All right, we have a first and a second, and a discussion. Harry Dunn, all of us in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Harry Dunn, would you carry? Thank you. Item six is our public comment. This is the time that we encourage anyone which to comment on anything not that is not on the agenda, and that you might want to bring our attention to. Is there anyone here in Jesse Mays Hall, would you just speak on that during that time? All right, anyone online? And Laurie, was anything submitted via email?
Nothing for tonight's meeting.
All right. Great. Thank you very much. All right, item number seven, A, is our presentation this evening by 12th Valley Fire Rescue. And please come on up.
Thank you.
Introduce yourself and welcome.
Thank you so much. Oh, grab one of those mics. You'll just hold it down here. Hold down the button. Check. Down. Don't move the slides. Okay. This is Mayor's, members of the council. My name is Patrick Fayle. I'm the Assistant Chief for 12 Valley Fire Rescue. And today I have the dubious honor of delivering my first state of the district ever. And I do get nervous speaking in public. So hopefully, it's a good presentation, and I'll do my best. I do want to call out some really special people that we have in attendance here today. The first one being Captain Andrew Klein, in back. Andrew and I have worked together on and off for 22 years. We were station captains together on hazmat team. He's just a great friend, and I know he's a great servant to the city. Andrew, could you?
Thank you for having us here this evening, Mayor. This is Councilman. So we have Justin Messingbrink, the officer on today, his driver, Frank Tola. And we have Senior Firefighter, Mike from here. And then our hermetic on the crew, Caesar. And this is, so Station 17, as you know, four people, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and then our public repair specialist, Corinne.
Thanks, Andrew. So as executive staff and other staff are starting to put this presentation together, we really reflected on that we had a ton of new people in leadership positions, myself included, and that our cities and our counties were probably in the same position. So we really wanted to start this presentation with our mission statement. Andy, could you chase I? It's just a baseline, as we're all starting to get to know each other. But our mission really is to create safer communities through prevention, preparedness, and effective emergency response. Pretty simple statement for what we try to accomplish in a really dynamic environment. As I mentioned, we have a lot of new leaders. So to guide those leaders, we've created a strategic plan that will run through 2028 with the main objectives of health, performance, opportunities. This really is a simple document, and all of our leaders, company officers, upper level managers, are all expected to direct their work back to the strategic plan. It relates to everything from our budgeting to our promotional processes, to how we engage with the people we serve in our community, and our partners. The main portions of that plan are health, and I just want to talk a little bit about that. We're committed to advancing a healthy organization through unified mission, effective communication, and resilient people and leaders. That's key in today's environment for 12 Valley Fire Rescue. And also at the top of the list is responsible resource management. It's getting more expensive all the time to run the operations that we need to run, and we're forced to be more innovative and run a little leaner, and that's going to continue into the future. Our performance is always at the top of our sphere. We will continue to run a high-performing organization and a workforce with particular focus on our core functions. So going back to our basics, a really effective emergency response. And what we're, you're going to see tonight is our engagement in the community in risk reduction. We're putting a lot of investment in trying to stop situations from happening that require our response. And our opportunities, we've partnered here, we've partnered with private sector as well. We're going to continue to carefully evaluate those partnerships and opportunities. And when appropriate, we're going to execute them, and when not appropriate, we're going to dismiss them. Next slide. As related to the strategic plan, particularly our health and performance, is staffing and succession planning, and it's really at the top of our priority. Lots of new faces, many retirements, especially in leadership positions. As of April 2023, 63% of all our upper level managers, battalion chiefs, captains, are either on a court back, meaning they have retired but continue to work under contract because their experience is too valuable, or they are eligible to retire within the next five years. In the past year, we've conducted promotional processes for the tenants, captains, battalion chiefs, district chiefs, and assistant chief. This last weekend, I did our meritorious service awards where we honor our firefighters and paramedics for the heroics that they do throughout the years. We also reflected back on, through a slideshow of all the promotions, over 50 of our personnel, 450 operational personnel have either been promoted to the tenants, captains, battalion chiefs, district chiefs, or assistant chiefs in the last one year. So that's pretty unprecedented for our organization. Like cities and other fire departments around the nation, it's been difficult. I was talking to James about recruitment and retention of our people. This has certainly changed in my 24 years on the job. It's getting more and more difficult to recruit the type of talent that we need to recruit. Corinne in the back and her team really have led efforts to innovate in this space to try to attack, attract as the best possible candidates through social media blitzes, mass media advertisements, and outreach to attract more diverse candidates. We also leverage the talents of our newest members who have gone through the process most recently. Ask them what's working, what's not working, and really decentralize our command to allow them to produce content that will attract the talent, and it's just been great. We're leveraging platforms such as Instagram, TikTok, obviously Facebook and others. This next slide, I'm going to show you an example of what they've been able to produce. Go ahead and click on that for these Andy. Didn't take. May not have it, but it, that's okay. It's really cool. Get a chance to go online, check it out. It's pretty innovative than what they were able to put together.
Is that Beaverton?
Yeah, it is Beaverton. Yeah, you know the ball. Yeah. Community, Karen.
Um, yes, yes, I participated in the academy when I first became mayor, and I was stationed there.
Did you go to the ball?
Uh, they would not allow me.
You come with me next time. Yeah. Yeah, I know who's in charge. Uh, next slide. Um, just give you a real quick bond update. We had a bond approved in 2021. And really, it's designed to bolster our infrastructure. We have some aging infrastructure. We have some needs to possibly relocate some stations. The location of 62 is a priority for us right now in the lower Beaverton area. We've held a community meeting in March, and we're working through a land use system as we speak. Our training center, we've done a needs analysis underway. It really hasn't been updated. Where we train most of our firefighters throughout the year and through their academy hasn't really been updated since the early 90s. And you'll see in this presentation that the amount of people that we have to hire, approximately 40 per year, we need better resources for them in their academy. So what's on the concept table is a recruit village, which puts their education in one spot. They have shower facilities, training facilities, workout facilities away from the administrative buildings. I think it'll be cleaner, a little more streamlined for that process. New administration building out there that's seismically upgraded, because right now it's, it's not test worthy. And then many of our main props haven't been updated for years, so those will go through an update. We're looking at altering some of our fire stations to more inclusive interior environments, as well as some seismic upgrades, and also purchasing for land for future fire stations and growth within our communities. Next slide. This is just a quick snapshot. I'm sure in the passing curve, the 12 Valley Fire Rescue is a data-driven organization. The executive team, now, we really try to do that differently. We're a data-informed organization. But our gut and our community feel really does impact the decisions that we make as well. But this is just a stat snapshot. You're going to see on the left-hand side, 244 incidents for Station 17. That's a little misleading. That is not all that they ran in 2022. The heat map on the right-hand side, that is the city proper of North Plains. Those 244 incidents were the incidents that they ran in city proper. For 2022, they ran about 700 calls. What I really want this group to understand is that your Station 17 is part of a larger 28-station system and your surrounding areas. It's not just your Station 17 alone. Many of their responses are to backup other TBFNR stations and other TBFNR stations lead into this area. And it works as one large system. The other thing I'd like, really like this group to understand is that you do have above smaller fire departments, you do have some advantages with a 24/7 technical rescue team, 24/7 water rescue team, and a state hazmat team that's on 365 days a year. That level of service is pretty unusual in fire service. Some things I also want you to know, starting on the left-hand side, approximately 75% of all their incidents are EMS, without 10 to 15% being fired in other incidents. One area interesting to kind of note is if you look down an hour of the day and day of the week, it's kind of hard to see. But you'll notice that your peak incidents occur on Monday at 4 o'clock. So Monday at 4 o'clock, steer clear of North Plains. That's what that tells me. Pretty, pretty low incidence count. We have a really safe city. But I always do look for those two high peaks, try to make some joke about it. Next slide, please. So I mentioned we have a lot of new leaders and a lot of new positions, and with that comes innovation, and certainly we're leveraging that currently. On the left-hand side, you'll see a gentleman with a radio mic. That's our new simulation center at our training center. We ran several large incidents, one of them being Shaheen Mountain in 2020 in the Newburgh area. Certainly, Station 17 was there. I was there on the hill as well. And we had a real inability to expand that incident to the level that we needed to expand it through command and control, and we needed some more education. This is providing that education. This is the batter box for our incident commanders. I go through it monthly. Battalion chiefs go through it monthly. Our company officers, such as Messingbrink in the back and Klein, they'll start to go through that soon as well on more bring-to-the-faces. Upper right-hand corner, you're going to see the Lucas device. Station 17 does have a Lucas device. That's a hands-free CPR unit. We had our first Lucas device saved. We're all neurologically intact, cardiac arrest survivor walking out of the hospital. We'll be using that device this last year, and it frees up your personnel to do other critical tasks. Those have been deployed throughout the district. Little note that I'd like you guys to know is that if you suffer a sudden cardiac arrest on TBFNR, anywhere on TBFNR, you have a 43% chance of survival. That is 13 percentage points higher than the national average. It is an unbelievable number, and it's due to the work of these people in the back. They come as a team. They're highly efficient. They're incredibly well-trained, and we bring the best tools there. So I'm very, very proud of that number, very proud of our crews. Next slide. I'm just keep it there. It's Andy, but I'll just talk about this. We have partnered, we do a lot of public-private partnerships. We've partnered with Apple to test a product that really recognizes our responders' physical and emotional distress. So they wear an Apple Watch. There's 20 of them. I have one as well. I just don't have it on me tonight because the battery ran out. Really, but it, throughout the day, it tracks my heart rate, my respiratory rate. Done. Might be terrible. Can you hear me now? It's on. Just got to hold it up pretty close, pretty close. That close? Maybe not. Not very close. Thank you. Apple. And SHIELD pilot. So we have 20 firefighters. They wear a watch, tracks their heart rate, temperature, cardiac rhythm, their sleep patterns. And it tells them, hey, you had this kind of stressful moment at these times, and it tracks kind of their well-being, and then gives them information. Apple also receives the information. We're blinded from it, but it's really helping to understand the sleep patterns of our firefighters and then stress patterns that they have. We can see when they've been on a critical incident. We can see when their temperature, their body temperature went too high. And in the future, we're really hopeful that this pilot will have a lot of tentacles. One being firefighters are inside the building. If we can see that their core temperature is rising, we can put another crew on deck and get them out of there. We know that when firefighters' core temperature gets to a certain, they have a very high risk of sudden cardiac arrest, regardless of age. So those are all the things that we're working to create a safer environment for our firefighters. We're also working with a company called Emergent, talked about how our data is so important to the operations that we run. We knew that for what we wanted to do, our on-scene data, our command and control, understanding all the information coming out of the computer of the apparatus, we needed to own that data. We couldn't go off the shelf and own the data, and that data is important to how we make decisions. And so we partnered with the company, and we've created our own platforms. So there's going to be some profit sharing in the future through that company as that goes nationwide. You're going to see up here all of our training hours, 100, over 100,000 hours total training. Now, this is organization-wide, all 600 employees. So a tremendous amount of effort and, and time goes into training. 880,000 hours of non-EMS training. What that is, is preparing for our futures. Those are lieutenant developmental processes, captain's developmental processes, battalion chief developmental process, DEI training, diversity, equity, inclusion, and overall compliance training such as OSHA. And the 21,000 hours of EMS. I have received many questions. When 73% of your work is EMS, why is only 21,000 hours training? It's because they get so good at running the same calls. What we're training for in that 21,000 hours is the low-frequency IQD calls, your cardiac arrest, your stroke, your pediatrics, your traumas. And so those are really intensive training hours, but on very specific areas. So the rest of their training really happens away from here, and then they're just running that volume. Our crews run 65,000 calls a year. Excellent.
Wait, again?
What's that?
How many again?
65,000 calls a year.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, which is about a 15% increase since 2021. Big increase. Let me get to my note here really quick. Over the last several years, we've been experiencing ambulance level zeros in Washington County. Has anyone ever heard that term? Yeah. Ambulance level zero means that there is no available ambulances in Washington County by the private provider. So for the last several years, your local fire departments, Walton Valley, Hillsborough, Forest Grove, Gaston, have been bolstering the EMS system in Washington County for transport. Normally, we would respond, we would be the first ALS responders on scene, stabilize the patient, hand off the patient to the private ambulance, who would then transport the patient to hospital. That system, for a multitude of reasons, has been failing for about a decade. So we can no longer continue to support it on our own. We worked and built an EMS council with public and private stakeholders. And they were organized to address this problem. The county this last year opened a bid process with the expectation for improved data sharing dispatch, transparency through the private provider, and improved response times. Three vendors applied, AMR was selected. So for years, the private provider in Washington County has been Metro West. Starting in August, it will now be AM1. We're really hopeful for that, that we're going with a regional, the county has chosen to go with a regional partner. There in Milton Keynes County, Clackamas County, and now Washington County. We hope we can leverage those economies of scale, make sure that we have the right resources at the right time within the county. Next slide, please. Risk reduction and education. So I'm new in my role. I mentioned that. And I oversee the managers that run our risk reduction and education program, and they are just doing a wonderful job. And I want to share some of their accomplishments. Our deputy fire marshals and inspectors performed over 3,000 inspections of commercial buildings in 2022. Our fire investigators use their insight to influence state and national building code associations for safer construction and building features. Twice yearly, and this has gone on for as long as I've worked at TBFNR, we conduct multifamily housing landlord training. Good majority of our fires happen in multifamily housing. And so we really, we know we have a lot of turnover in those managers. We try to hit them twice a year, make sure that they understand, keep their exits clean, their service closets clear, working smoke detectors, working CO detectors in their facilities, keeping their stairwells clear, things like that. We continually, for the last 10 years, have taught, handled CPRs to thousands of students and residents. And I will say, of all the risk reduction measures we've had and that I've seen over my career, this has been the most impactful. Hundreds of lives have been saved by teaching bystanders hands-only CPR. And we certainly will continue that into the future. We've started performing post-fire knock and talks to educate residents when they're most impressible. So after a fire happens in a community, we flood the community with a group like you see down below. We talk to them about fire escape plans in their home, fire safety, working, and make sure that they have working smoke detectors, and it's been really impactful. We also do town hall meetings with, but we just transparently answer any questions about the incident that they might have, why we did certain things, why we didn't do certain things. And it's really created a sense of community, especially in our vulnerable populations. We just finished up on. We just finished up on, in April, our annual summit for hundreds of scouts to learn about safety. And these are just a small example of what we're doing to reduce risk in our community. Right now, the future of community risk reduction is to identify and mitigate nine-one hot, nine-one-one hotspots and reduce the calls and improve community safety. I want to give you a quick example. So anyone heard of El Monica Transit Station in Beaverton? Interesting about El Monica, our house's population would ride into the end of the line and the end of the time. There's one phone at the end of El Monica, and you pick that phone up and it direct, there's no buttons to push, it directly calls nine-one-one. So you're cold, you're hungry, and you have no resources. And you end up at El Monica and our Beaverton stations, we're averaging thirteen runs there every night. So we have a problem that's not sustainable. Those units are not available for crit- critical runs that are occurring at the same time. So we needed to do something. We partnered with Triumphant City of Beaverton, Washington County nonprofits, and we work to educate and redirect individuals to the necessary resources. This resulted in a significant reduction in nine-one-one calls and also a reduction in hospital strain. And what we really found was a more compassionate, appropriate way to care for a houseless population, and it has been wildly successful. The only issue with it is it takes constant maintenance. We can't always be the pipe pipers at the table. We really do need some help from our county partners to make sure that that's sustainable, and we're working together to try to get there. Next slide, please. Talked really quickly about our May twenty twenty-four levy replacement. Our current levy is forty-five cents and expires on June twenty-fifth. It funds firefighters, paramedics, some support personnel. We purchased medical and firefighter equipment with it. Our current levy rate, though, is not going to be able to sustain our operations moving forward. Just the cost, the roll of rig out the door, it's no different than all of our households and the increase in costs that we're experiencing in our lives. It really is translating to the same. And then just our demand, I mentioned that we had a fourteen percent increase of demand, so we have a desperate need to add concentration. And what I mean by that is, we have all the stations in the right space. We don't have enough people in those stations or enough rigs to respond. We're getting double calls for a first duty area. Call will come in, the rig will go out, another call will come in for that first duty area. So we need to add some concentration into the future. As we get closer, we're currently in analysis with a group of people and a team to help us understand what our future needs are and understand what the voter attitudes are currently. And certainly, we'll continue to communicate with you all as we learn more and we get closer to May twenty twenty-four. That is the end of my very first state of the district, and I'm happy to field any questions you might have.
You did very well. I did not have known that you had apprehension. But believe it or not, I'm an introvert too, and I get it.
It is hard, yeah.
No, thank you. Questions for council? Councilor Kenner?
Yes.
How is this AMR? Are they gonna be situated, what part of the county? I know where Metro is at, but so how is this gonna, how's this gonna work?
I don't know where their corporate offices are. They are going to run a system status, and what I mean by that is they, through data, figure out where the calls are happening, and they deploy resources to those regional areas. They necessarily don't have a station where they respond out of. So I believe that they're gonna run system status, just like Metro West does now. We believe that they're gonna be able to field more units than what Metro West is able to field now and provide a higher level of response with lower response times than what we're currently seeing. We also, the way that the the contract is written is that it really entices the private provider to work with public agencies such as TBF and R for the best patient outcomes. So through sharing, you could get an ambulance from TBF and R, you could get an ambulance from AMR, but it's an overall cooperative system approach, my understanding.
Thank you.
First of all, great job. What has to make it?
I am not, I think, so everyone upstairs, okay, I don't know what to do either. I would suggest leaving one on and everyone else just turns off. For now, and then I'll K D someone who knows better.
I just wanted to say, great job, and thank you so much to, I know this is just a portion of the Station Seventeen crew, but thank you so much. Your hard work does not go unnoticed, and I know there's a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff that citizens truly have no, no idea. I just want to say thank you, and I moved here almost ten years ago, and I remember my very first, maybe month in North Plains, there was a pretty, there was actually two very substantial structural fires and total losses, all on the same street. And I remember thinking, oh my gosh, that was, that was pretty bad. And at the time, we were contracted through Washington County Empire District Two. And I didn't realize the impact of not having a four-man crew, that they can't go into a structured fire and they have to wait for, you know, neighboring neighboring stations to respond, and I just really, really appreciate having that four-man crew and that peace of mind, and it is, it is well worth the money to me. That being that I did, did have a couple random questions. I know Station sixty-four is the one on Evergreen Parkway. I have a twenty-six, which one is Station sixty-eight?
Sixty-eight is, how would I describe this? More towards Science Parkway. And does that make sense back up in there? And it's a, it's a ladder truck, so it's a tillered ladder truck out of there. It provides that level of response. They're really the ones to do a search on a structure fire while Engine Seventeen is pulling hoses and trying to attack the fire, but they also have a swing engine. So if a fire comes into their first duty area, probably don't need ladders at that point, they need water, and then we bring a truck from another area.
I see, okay. My other question was, I remember hearing, you know, doing, doing more with less, right? Especially fun. And thinking through firefighters and occupational cancer and that increased risk. And I originally curious if you could provide some insight into what TBF and R does to prevent that, that risk to their firefighters?
Such a great question. So we really started looking at this about ten years ago. I luckily was part of the team that really started to evaluate it, and what we found is we were completely deficient. Not only for how we were capturing our diesel particulate from the stick rigs going in and out to our cleaning processes for our turnouts and our SCBA. And so we really looked to the NFPA, National Fire Protection Agency, and then other innovative people within the industry and started asking whatever they're doing. And, and what they started to find was that if you did an immediate decontamination as crews were coming out, the stuff is still off-gassing on them. You can see it as they come out of a working structure fire, that as soon as you could get that stuff off, so they go through a quick decon process at that point. If they're done doing what they're doing, they then go to rehab, they wipe down their neck, their groin area, their armpits, those are critical areas. They rehab, and then their clothes, even after they've been initially grossed, decam, uh, decontaminated, get bagged up, go back to the station, and they have a second set of turnouts. And then that set of turnouts is then deployed for the rest of their ship. We're doing a lot. We have a dedicated work person company that responds on our fires just for critical decontamination of our firefighters and rehab. So they're the gatekeepers of rehab. There's no snowing them like we used to do back in the day. I know, I'm fine, I'm going back in, sit down. And they're our most critical asset and resources, the help of our firefighter. We take it very seriously. Can we do more? Yeah, we're looking at different styles of turnout washers that fully do extract everything that are currently being studied. We think our turnout washers are good right now. We believe these other ones might be better. And we're just gonna stay up on the newest and greatest as far as decontamination of our firefighters. They also go through yearly physicals, and they go through a full-body skin screening, and Dr. Burke, our physician, has caught many early-stage cancers of our firefighters. It's been a highly successful cooperative program between management and local sixteen sixty.
Thank you. That's, that's way more than I anticipated, so thank you. A couple more quick questions. Carthy clinics, I think, representing some of the younger demographic here in North Plains. Sometimes there's a a rumor that you can go to a fire maintenance and get your car seat checked out. Can you confirm that? Is that something that TBF and R does?
Yeah, I can deny it. And back in many years ago, when I first started, twenty-seven years ago, we used to do those, but then the requirements and certifications for what those manufacturers now require were too stringent for us to meet. Many of us have been parents. We know to put the knee in the seat and get it scrunched down and pull everything tight, but we weren't able to certify it, certify that it had a proper install. So now we turn people to places where they can buy their seats, and generally, they will certify they will install. We don't leave anyone hanging. We usually in the stations have a cooldown list of resources, so a great thing to do is stop by the fire station. If you have that need and ask the question, they'll get you pointed in the right direction.
Perfect. Last couple of questions. How do you find it? First, it is the county.
Well, you can talk to me. You can talk to Corinne, and we can help you out.
Okay, perfect. And then the last one, I, again, I know you're new in roles, don't expect an answer. But what do the next five years look like for Station Seventeen?
I think you're gonna see a whole remodel of Station Seventeen and Twenty-Six and Twenty-Seven. That's gonna have general gender-neutral facilities, a more welcoming environment. You will see the cancer prevention, hot, warm, and cold zones in that station in particular areas that they're allowed to go in after the fire, and then particular areas that they're not able to track that stuff into. You're gonna see different HVAC units to help move particular out from the environment that they're living in. You're gonna see that. I think you'll probably continue to see one four-person company in there. You may see newer apparatus over the next five years come through. Been working with the station captain on a rural spec for apparatus. We have had a one-size-fits-all that worked great when we were two hundred and ten square miles and largely suburban and urban, but now we're, we're on a square miles with a lot of rural. And they need to stand a little longer with a little more water before the cavalry comes. I think those will be the major changes that you see.
I think you so much.
Serious special training that goes on over here for the rural stuff that maybe out in the woods and we, we, as the regular dollar?
Well, I think, you know, most who gravitate towards this station have a wildland background and really understand the interface space where nature is gonna impact property, and they're really good at it. They have the proper equipment to work through that with their brush rate that they have here. And they're used to anything from field fires to where you actually, you know, firing the timber. They, they know how to handle that, and I think that's probably a main difference with the crews that you have on a normal basis out here than necessarily what you're gonna have in downtown Beaverton.
And this is not a question, it's more of a an FYI. I'm sure you guys are ready to talk to Andy about this, but you know, a lot of our training, we have some properties that you didn't have the hour. As far as, you know, entry and whatnot. Andy will have the better details about that and Tom and everyone else. Just FYI, that's cool.
Yeah.
And also, the, in the first of June, we're gonna have a social or, or a picture at Wiltshire. To be honest, it's a bit rough there in front of that area. I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but we get a chance to have stickers in the line.
We are now.
And also, I also.
Okay, great. I'll give you some cards before I leave tonight, thanks.
I guess I've got one small one. In about five years, I think, that we had open house with the fire station and part of. Anyway, and then I think the main reason for that is for recruitment for volunteer firemen. It's something that, if you're shorthanded, is that something you're looking at through the volunteer firefighters or?
You, you know, that's, that's a great question. What we've seen nationally is a reduction in volunteerism across the United States. The requirements that are now in place to be a firefighter are so extreme. They're extreme for a paid staff. And what they need to qualify in every year, and it's become increasingly difficult to maintain a family life, a career, and then also be a volunteer firefighter. We still have volunteers within our organization. Very few of them are combat qualified. Most of them are support volunteers who support our firefighters on scene by helping out with rehab, changing bottles, things like that. They're mainly housed in our corps, and when we have a major fire out here, they deploy out here. That's how we've chosen to run our volunteer program. The risk to them is pretty great in a combat role, so we, for the most part, choose to keep that career staff. Did that answer your question?
Sure, I can see that. Great, because I think it was, is no tempo for that, so. You're rather.
All right, of course.
Thank you. Some of my questions were already asked. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Great presentation. Certainly, it's good information. Just, and it's great to see how TBF and R is moving forward, and you know, I think about the summertime and, you know, I'm not a, I'm not a big sit in front of my TV kind of a person to watch, like, you know, all the six o'clock news sort of thing, but I did catch a little snippet this evening, just about a, about a fire recently in the Buxton area, you know, and it just kind of made me pause and wonder, oh, what are we expecting this summer? I know you don't have a crystal ball, no, none of us, and if we did have a crystal ball and it worked really well, right, we'd probably be very, you know, wealthy in some respects, but, you know, I'm just kind of wondering, what is TBF and R doing to anticipate, you know, the fire season?
Great question. I was just talking to staff today, and one of them called me out, and they said, you know, the other day, you, you didn't think, they were talking to me, you didn't think that we were gonna have an extreme fire season? My response to that is every year that they say it's gonna be extreme, it ends up not being, and the years that they say it's not gonna be extreme, it ends up being extreme. So here's what we do. We prepare like it's gonna be extreme every single year, and we continue to do that. You can go to tbfnr.com and under Fire and Life Safety, click on that tab, and you'll see our Ready, Set, Go program. The most valuable thing you can do as citizens within your communities is understand what that Ready, Set, Go is, and how to make sure that your properties are ready to go, and the properties of your neighbors are ready to go, that you are prepared to leave when the sheriff's department asks you to leave. They control evacuations, and we work closely together with that. And then our crews are highly trained. We had a very hard time in twenty twenty. We had started to ramp up our wildland interface program at that time. We have put it into full gear over the last couple of years. And most notably, your incident commanders are more ready than ever for a large incident. And their ability to communicate with aircraft, which we didn't have before, they now have that. And their ability, I won't bore you, but to run a type-three expanding incident has been greatly improved. So we are ready to go. Depending on the size and scale of the incident, we've also readyed our partners, and we're able to pull those triggers at the state-level resources that we need.
Thank you very much. I, I just know that, you know, it seems like it gets closer and closer, but then when we experience such, you know, like the winter that we have, and we think, oh, rain, 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 you know, with and, and in some respects, we think, oh, you know, we'll be fine, but, you know, I don't, I don't think on that.
Yeah, it's hard to know.
It's hard to know.
And, you know, this past weekend, we shut down burning in most of our area because we had RH, relative humidity, less than twenty, which is extreme. We had sustained winds of twenty miles an hour as prime fire, and we just had massive rain the week before. Your hour fuels, your small grasses, they dry out within minutes, you know, so. Yeah, we're not sure. Yeah, we're not sure.
Yeah, well, um thank you, Councilor Fay, for bringing up the ice cream social, um as always, we would love to have you out there and. Uh as you know, um I think the crew knows and we are we're a wonderful, you know, uh. Family friendly community, we'd love to have our events, especially in the summertime and any time that um you can participate in our community events. We would definitely welcome you to here.
Thank you so much, we enjoy being here and we're really grateful that we are now here.
Thank you. All right, moving on, um tonight is our staff report time, and first up is Ron.
Beijing Mayor and Counselor that has been yes, oh. Which might be two percent at the table or up here, we had a microphone, so I. I just want to also say how much I appreciate um Q Bell and Captain Klein. Um for help, being such a wonderful partner to the library, helping us with our um monthly quilts and playing. Changing that out and then also our friends at the library helping with the book moving that goes into the book sale. I know that um they would want me to express my appreciation for that, thank you. Uh so just a couple things that weren't on my report that I have to share, um this is a sample of the Find Your Voice Summer Reading Shirt. This is one of the styles that staff wearing, um Summer Reading kicks off on June first, connection with the city's sixtieth anniversary event. Uh we'll have a couple of tables at the event, um I just wanna thank the Knights of Pityas for donating two bicycles again this year for our spin and win. Week, um I don't know if you saw our social media posts, but we have a winner from last year that is still driving around with a little sign. Like a Pitya sign on bicycle, which we think is adorable, uh so we've given free advertising there. Those of you who are involved in that organization are giving some some uh PR. So we really appreciate it, um I wanted to say also that the Library's Trains for Communities. Grant from American Library Association and the Association for Rural and Small Libraries. Now been announced and in public, and we can talk about it. And Corinne W. and I are working on a press release for that, because it was just announced today. Um and that is a twenty thousand dollar grant to add an adaptive. Um public access computer and some adaptive computer equipment to check out as well as sensory storytime uh kits. We're really excited. And we will have a library board vacancy uh of July, it's an in town vacancy, so I just want to uh let you know. Um that we are gonna be opening that up for applications to be on a wonderful library board. Um Carol Loughran is finishing her second term on library board next month. And uh just one final thing I'd like to mention, our one of our team volunteers, Trinity Smith, is working with Glencoe High School. Do have their color guard in our early festival for you this year. And that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I agree with you. Uh this uh the last month, there were uh. Both men's officers responded from their vehicles and services self initiated, uh none of them were reoccurring. Uh that these public demand calls were right in the average uh where they should be. Uh the only thing uh really stands out that responded to was the burn room in Sunset Ridge, it reports. I'm unable to make a an arrest on that, but uh it's still available, we'll be open to be under additional information. Aside from that, there are sixty eight hours of overtime, approximate, nine hours of overtime. Uh back, you can see the calls responded to uh both uh public demand and self initiated, obviously the the bathroom toward yourself. That's about it, unless you have any questions.
Major Springs. There's Russian, how does Washington County view your um handle their uh zones? Is it uh for like twenty twenty uh districts and they would get assigned to them that pass down to the patrol of these areas? And it says Nerkins has a private police or real contact through there, are we included in that uh in that in that coverage?
If I understand what you're asking correctly, you're asking how Washington County basically districts, they're patrol districts.
Yeah, we shift us now, I'm sure they have, right, you go in here, you know, they're very, go have fun, you know, you don't know what, you have to have it in certain in certain zones. These were when I did this stuff back in nineteen ninety two, we did that, right? And that's a, it was a county one, it was a city, so.
Yeah, the county does that, they they divide up the the county into several districts now, uh and that's the entire county. Uh understand that the urban areas or the the other cities still have in essence part of that. Uh county breaking up, if that makes sense, those districts uh have portions of the city in there. However, uh like like anything that's uh government, we don't want to patrol in the the most part. In the area where it's already being patrolled by funding for other police officers, so. The sheriff's office focuses their their patrol missions on unincorporated Washington County. Though Northland's being incorporated, it has their own officers, that doesn't mean that there's not some overlap uh to and from. Uh but to the most part deputies are going out the west end away from where there's an actual city and it's only a spark.
So your lap is intentional, it's kind of carried through, you know, the layout, it's gonna lose it most.
Yeah, correct, that's where the, you know, the sheriff's office is in Willow Hills, so obviously going to and from. Uh other than like East Precinct, which is most part in Beaverton, uh that doesn't exclude that we have. Uh interagency agreements, so we still uh if Northland would have a critical incident, they're going to get the officer. As I said before, you're getting multiple agencies, multiple officers. Interagency, but for your general day to day patrol, you patrol in the area where is your your funding source for the most part. Which would be that in the old days, you know, you brought up on Monica Max, the county had several Max platforms within the county. Now we have zero, so it as a supervisor, I don't want my deputies patrolling. The Mac station in Beaverton, I want them going to the residents, to the community that's the most part funding their. Uh their lives, and again, some of that's interesting because there's multiple funding sources within the sheriff's office. Uh so you're still getting some, um but really, it's it's gonna incorporate Washington County with the deputy's control.
Thanks.
Any other questions around the council? Counselors present.
Yeah, yeah, one, so how's the new four way stops working and the speed limit on Northland?
It seems to be working great, uh I'm not saying we're out there twenty four seven, obviously, uh but when I'm there during the day. I know they definitely there tonight, uh very rarely you're getting someone actually. Might say speeding, because you know thirty mile an hour be speeding, but I'm talking speeding to the point where really you pull someone over, there's not that. Uh there's people drive, they're a little uh plus or minus, and so and the four way stop to have to see people running. I think it's becoming much more common that people are realizing they're there.
Anyone else? Thank you, G.
Thank you.
Um next up is the Public Works um report, I know Dustin is not here this evening.
Right now, he had a pre planned trip to Steve's family.
Oh, okay, okay.
Mother's Day.
Okay.
It's a important holiday.
Yeah, yes, it is, um before we take any questions, I just want to also say thank you to the Public Works crew. For being um at the cleanup day on Saturday, uh it was a huge success. Um and their assistance was awesome, um you know, a lot of a lot of sweat equity going on there. With the volunteers as well, but um it was a good six, it was a good success, a good day and really appreciate um Public Works being there, so. I didn't know if anyone had any questions about the report that they could field to me.
Now the question, uh just a way to be nice to have, I remember four says miscellaneous, has like four things there in paragraph form. So it's kind of hard to uh, I'm not getting over the air for anyone there, Steve knows. I think it's like they have like four things in paragraph form, so it's kind of hard to differentiate, just from one to the other out there, but those would be awesome.
I'll let Steve know.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, since I'm under planning, I was looking under Justin. No, it's okay. Um any questions for um Public Works? Any questions for planning?
About planning?
Planning, any questions about planning, yes. All right. Moving on to finance, Bill.
Thank you, thank you, Laura, uh good evening, Councilors, um you do not have a report in front of you, but I wanted to give an update. Um with the numbers that I've worked on since uh for the standard report that I provided you, mind. And um it's not gonna s- nothing terribly different from um really kind of what you heard through your budget. Um planning process, but as far as to the end of the of April. Um there weren't a lot of uh changes in terms of where we're tracking uh versus budget for the different departments. And then the street and the general fund and the streets and the water fund. Um let's see, I think the first thing I would say is that um over the course of the year. This this year certainly, but over the whole current by name, you know, we were reporting personnel services costs, but look. On the high side for for the general government department, um there have been absolutely no changes in and we was working in general government. We fully budgeted for it, and we even had, we lost one employee that earned more than the person who replaced them. Um and so it was bizarre that Personnel Services was running high uh monthly over the course of buying it. Well, going to the budget um and kind of getting it ready, we found where the error was in uh specifically in the accounting software for assigning. Um cost attribution attribution um to the department, and so that's been correct, so the numbers that are in the budget are correct. Um in terms of how much has been um spent, and we we went back and kind of moved. Um some personnel expense out of general government and into some other departments, a little bit here, a little bit there. To match with the distribution that was uh expected and approved in the twenty one twenty three budget. Um so that weird thing was just a spring roof accounting software error that we um we've been to kind of figure out what the problem was. So basically, personnel expense um has gone up a little bit because of that correction for all of the other departments, but library. Um so public safety, parks and rec, community development, um those departments kind of saw, you know, three, four percent. I would say nothing big, but we we redistributed appropriately, um but nothing pushed any department up higher over budget for personnel. Um but overall, um I would say the general fund. Um we'll talk more about the supplemental supplemental budget tonight and the proposed resolution. Um but so far overall, the general fund is tracking at about ninety one percent um of budget expenditure through April period. Um and so materials and services is really kind of the only category, general fund wide. Um that is right at budgeted expenditure, uh we're we're two thousand dollars off right now, so it's really tracking closely. And that really is kind of due to um some of the material and services costs in the Community Development Department, DGB. Planning and um consulting, and again, we'll get to that with the supplemental budget, but. That material and services for general fund would be below budgeted, if not for that, kind of one room um area of expenditure. So the general fund overall um is 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 tracking pretty close, if not below budget, we've made some some edits to that. Streets and Water Fund are both both continue to to track what below budgeted expenses. Um we're thirty percent for streets and we're at twenty percent overall for water, we budgeted some significant capital projects. Um that haven't materialized as were expected or budgeted, so those expense numbers are well below budget. But revenues coming in from things like the top um are at or above where we expect them to be for the streets fund. The water fund revenue coming in has been above as well, um just more people's buying a bit more water than budgeted because of growth. So um revenues higher, expenses are well below what we budgeted, so those both of those operating funds are doing really well. Um the two other topics that I kind of have been covering for you all, um in terms of numbers, overdue water accounts. Um end of April, we saw no change in the number of overdue accounts. In at February twenty eighth, um at the end of February, we had thirty overdue um aging accounts. Um April thirtieth, thirty different accounts, but still have the same number, so it's kind of hopefully in a steady state. Um and at the end of February, we had come all the way down to just a little over twenty three hundred dollars in overdue total balances. Combined overdue to the city for for water service, uh at the end of April, that number came down by thirty one dollars and ninety cents. So we're currently, or at least at the end of April, total combined overdue balances um for water service are twenty twenty three hundred forty one dollars. So over the last two, three months, we've actually kind of, after bumping along in ten thousand, eleven thousand, twelve thousand. We're down to just a little over twenty three hundred for three months in a row now, so and thirty accounts overdue citywide. So that's looking very, very good compared to where it was even four months ago, uh so it's been a downward trajectory, but we're in a good spot. And the final thing is property tax receipts are kind of reported that month, and just to see where we are, and the city has brought in for this fiscal year. Um seven hundred and sixty three thousand nine hundred ninety five dollars, so we just just short of seven sixty seven hundred and sixty four thousand. Um as of the end of April, that is um almost eight percent higher than the same time last year in fiscal year twenty two. At seven hundred and nine thousand seven hundred forty one dollars, so, you know, um. More people, more homes, more things paying uh property taxes, basically, so. Um we last year, property tax revenue grew by almost nine percent, and it's looking like this year's gonna be eight or eight or a little bit over eight percent. Year over year with fiscal year twenty three. Sometimes things, we don't collect anything after April, sometimes we get a little bit in May, trails in, we'll see. Um but it's gonna be really close to seven hundred sixty five thousand probably for this year. So eight percent or so over, um those are kind of the typical topics I cover in the report, so I, you know, I can ask. Or I can answer any questions, um or we or I can we can say for later for supplemental budget discussion or whatever you want.
Counselor, questions? Um one question I have though, um is that a report um that you might be able to email to us?
Yes, all the all the numbers are done, it's just a matter of, you know, the deal.
Yeah, if you if you would mind, just for due diligence, appreciate that. Counselor Stan, you should.
For uh the Justice Development Tax Fund, what did? They just have turned ninety nine thousand either a reasonable dollars, was that including the uh twenty thousand dollar credit? Or is that, does it make it down to ninety nine thousand eight three seven?
So that's a that's um that's specifically uh about, that's specifically an item in the supplemental budget, so I don't know if you want to move forward, you can jump into that.
Um I I would, I just would like um to make sure that um any counselors have any additional questions on the information that Bill just recorded. If not, we can then go ahead and move forward, but. Nine A, which is our resolution. Two, 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 nine, the supplemental budget, and I can turn this over to Bill and Andy. And would you just hold on to your question and go ahead and give this step reported and then you can bring it to.
Well, we have four funds, two of those are sub funds in the general fund, and Bill, you're on the whole, so. Thank you, Andy. Correct, so supplemental budget, we're looking at five, well, yeah, two sub funds, three other funds where we have a situation where. Expenditures are either already have or are expected to exceed the budgeted amount for FY twenty one, twenty three of the current biennium. And so some of these have already happened, some of these were, were coming to you with a proposed budget to just cover us, so we don't have to come back again, sort of thing. The first one is the public safety department. Sub fund or department in the general fund, and again, we don't, as I mentioned just a little while ago, we don't expect that the general fund overall is actually going to go over budgeted. But we're going to treat each department as a, as a sub fund because of how we budgeted. And how we can, how we, how we do expenditure control budgeting, so. We'll, we'll do, we're proposing a supplemental for two departments individually within the general fund. So the first one is the public safety department, and we have a proposed supplemental budget of one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. To cover expected overtime expense. For the full biennium, okay, it's, 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 it, I want to say is. Eighty, eighty five, we, we. The one hundred and sixteen thousand dollar estimate is how much we expect total public safety. To cost us for the full biennium through the thirteenth month. Of budgeting, so you know, we always get, we get invoices a month. Late after, a month after services are provided by Washington County Sheriff's. So the one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars is what will cover us, is estimated to cover us. Through that trailing in last invoice in, in July of this year, for its service in June. Okay. So we haven't gone over one hundred and sixteen thousand, we haven't approached the one hundred and sixteen thousand yet, but. If you look at monthly and you just add it up through end of June, that's where we are at, that's what we're proposing is a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars.
How does you get that, that's a dozen dollars, it's about a hundred bucks an hour, something like that, right? So we have, they're limited, we have authorization to choose to recover lots up to ninety hours, or how many hours do they have? Budgeting that to. And of course, they have to fill it out at the, if, if they want to, there's a maximum that we have there?
Right. I don't, I don't have a specific answer to, answer to your question, I guess, I don't want to, I fear my discharacterization with the number represents, the one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars is meant to cover all costs. For sheriff's office through, through the end of June. Last bill paid for, for the fiscal year of the biennium in July, it's not, it's not just one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. For overtime alone, it's for everything, including the unexpected or the authorized, but higher overtime than originally this budget.
Okay, because I thought I said overtime incurred or unbudgeted and occasionally remaining patrols, like I've done with overtime.
It, yeah, it's, it, the way it reads, it can definitely come across that way, it's meant to be all this. Total Washington County Sheriff's Office expense, but the over budget is driven, is driven by overtime. That's a, that's a, that's a component of it.
So how much over budget then?
Well, by the end of June, we expect to be over by one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars.
Okay. So is that the maximum overtime the city is authorized to do it and then be less? Or is that just a trend where we were there? Times are hard, folks come up more, more overtime.
Well, it, I mean, this is basically just on a monthly total expense basis, this, this. Pushes us out, to pushes us out to the end of, of June, is all it is, is meant to do here. And, and whatever you authorize here, that's, that's all the dollar rest. The second one is the community development department's sub fund. We're proposing one hundred thousand dollars in additional, additional budget to cover unexpected costs related to. UGB, basically, UGB planning and that process. Some of it's attorneys fee, some of it is consultants. Having to do with getting estimates to where we are now, dealing with the state, responding to the state, extending the process of advisory committees and going back and revising work and being. And then adding the task, some of the task force. Findings and the process thereafter, so that's what that is. And. June five, we're done, well, I mean, you'll see the council will hear the urban growth boundary. Expansion on June fifth, but we're done responding to the state. With, in this biennium, basically, so it's June's the end of this, so we're proposing a hundred thousand to cover us through the end of June for everything we've, we've done. In addition to what was already budgeted.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
So. Didn't we get a bunch of grants from the state? For this urban growth boundary, I, I can't remember the figure, but was there a lot of money there too, towards the damage that?
Council Kindle, we did the grant for, for UGB planning, but it doesn't begin until after July one, and that's for concept.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, no, no, quite all right. And we don't handle any of that money, the state's spending for us, so we don't have to worry about accounting, okay? Yes. The next would be the transportation system development charge fund. We're proposing six hundred, eight, six thousand eight hundred and five dollars to be. Approved or transferred to reimburse the community development department. For different project planning and compliance on, on. This big kind of projects coming up. It, it's basically a reimbursement mechanism, the new methodology, SDC methodology update that was done last spring. Recommended in that. The capital funds that, that bring in SDC as well as the TDP fund. They should share in the cost of project planning and architecture and accounting and all of those different things. And the standard is four percent of revenues brought in, up to four percent can be. Spent on compliance and planning and that sort of thing, so that's what this is, and that's what some of the other supplemental lines, script lack. Is, is utilizing that four percent to help pay for managing those things that they do. Those funds do. Instead of relying on general fund revenue to pay for it. Okay, next from the transportation development tax fund, the council page asked about this one specifically, so. A couple of years ago, at least, the Hillsboro School District gave, well, paid into the fund, two hundred thousand dollars. And it was meant to be for a bridge over, over the creek of what became our pedestrian path bridge on West Union Road. That two hundred thousand dollars was always supposed to help pay for that project. But when we set up the budget for the FY twenty one, twenty three biennium, we didn't show that transfer occurring and reimbursing for the project. The monies are already spent, the money for the project, the project's done, and the monies were always reserved for that project, so this is just. Formally transferring that money, and because it's an interim transfer over the transportation bond, where the project actually happened. It's a transfer, so it's considered an expenditure, and so the amount requires a supplemental budget, basically. The rest of it is that, is a portion of the transportation development tax revenue that is, that came in. During the biennium and utilizing that, well, a little under four, well, it's one hundred four percent, but. Using, utilizing a share of some of the transportation development tax revenues to reimburse the community development department. Or managing and dealing with projects and project planning that TDT revenues will pay for.
And I see the sentence is under budgeted by ninety nine thousand four hundred and eighty, eighty seven dollars.
Yes.
That's pretty close to the. The, the, the difference between a thousand and two ninety nine, eight forty seven, one year, just for a switch, oh, cool, that. So I want to make sure that numbers, you know, right, or maybe some of these have different numbers and just.
No, no, the, the ninety nine, forty seven is meant to be. A percentage of revenue that has, has come in across the, the entire two-year biennium, so it's just kind of a coincidence, that's how.
Right, I need to make sure there wasn't kind of a, you know, who's.
No, no, and I mean, honestly. Some of the, I can't remember if this is one of them, but a couple of. We're not, you know, we're not proposing a full four percent be transferred in these supplementals. All we're trying to do is just kind of. Transfer something, just reimburse for some of the possible, and the general fund, the community development, so that's basically what, what we're hoping here.
Thank you.
Sure.
Good question. We'll go back to UGBs.
Sure.
Talking about this on June fifth. Even though we, if we do pass the. Measure. There could be lawsuits, correct? Does that figure into what costs we might have later on?
Counselor Smith, that is something that we have considered for the buy, in the budget, for the next biennium that, that, but the budget committee approved. But you all will hear for adoption. Next month. So we are budgeting for it. But that's in the next, the next biennium. Just so happens, July, the start of the budget year, so, yeah, that's when those costs. Yeah, I mean. If, if the letter that we got, if the letters that we did get put into the record, asking questions or observing things about our. Proposed UGB amendment in the planning commission hearing, if, if those letters, those two letters are any indication. I'm not saying that there won't be legal challenge, but the content of those letters. Only a couple of points in one of them might be something, we, we, we've initiated research to make sure we're okay. But there were really only two points in one of the letters that we're going, we have need to be more cautious about, I guess, is what I would say.
Well, no, Andy brought it up, was. A Friday at Thousand Friends and Hillsboro. So.
Um, we. We. It's, it's almost inevitable when you are looking at expanding onto farmland, that you're going to get. Some kind of query or even challenge. But we've been very deliberate about our process, and everything we have done has been extremely statute and administrative rule driven. And so. They'll have to challenge, they'll have to challenge us on the rules, not the analysis.
I was just gonna, my, my consideration is the money part.
We, I, I can't remember how much we have in the budget in the next biennium for it, but we have budgeted for. Some, but you know, we don't know. I wish, I wish that.
I know it's a crap shoot.
It is, it is, but like I said, the content of the letters that we did get. Indicate that only two items. And we're looking into them to be safe, but we didn't get letters that laundry listed a bunch of concerns, and one of the letters was just questions. So. That is in the budget next time. The final is the Parks Capital Fund, and again, supplemental budget requirements by the state, you all in March. I was just, we were, we were just discussing that's a new path to resolution two, 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 one. That kind of formally allows the money that we got. For, from the state of Oregon for Jesse Mays Park rehabilitation, you authorize that receipt and it, you know, being used for the project. But the money was parked in the ARPA fund, and then we had to transfer it over to the Parks Capital. And the Parks Capital Fund actually suspended out the door of the project. So because the Parks Capital Fund, then the topic of the resolution was really authorize the money to be released for the project, the Parks Capital. Supplemental budgets, and they're required, but supplemental budgets are required for. On a fund by fund basis, so because the Parks Capital Funds spend more money than budgeted because of the ARPA. Transfer, we, we have that number before you, same one point five, but you've already authorized with the other resolution it being used. And then there's an additional thirty four thousand, one hundred and forty six dollars, which is part of that four percent of system development charge revenue that. Is, is okay to help pay for the funds, project planning and project management and compliance for that matter.
Questions? Um, so this is a resolution, and if, asking just one more time, any further questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to move forward with this supplemental budget.
I'll move to adopt resolution number two, 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 nine, resolution of the City of North Plains, Oregon, adopting a twenty twenty one, twenty twenty three supplemental budget. To appropriate funds or items to acknowledge the primary budget was adopted.
Got a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a first and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Thank you, and thank you, Bill. Um, next item up, we have ten A, it's our public hearing, and our ordinance, it's ordinance number four eight eight, it is the. Downtown improvement plan zoning code text amendment, it's the second reading and adoption. Worry just for housekeeping, anything that I need, okay, thank you, idea, all right. Any questions, we visited this a couple of weeks ago, any questions about this memo? All right. This ordinance is up for a second meeting by title only, do I have a motion?
I agree, the ordinance for eight, by title only.
And the first and the second? All seven, all right, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried, thank you. Ordinance number four eight eight is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of North Plains, Oregon. It's implementing an amendment to text of the zoning and development code regarding development in the Seaborn Zone within the city's downtown core. Now it's time, do I have a motion to approve ordinance number four eight eight?
I'll move to approve ordinance number four eight eight.
Thanks.
All right, I have a first and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried, thank you. New business, any new business this evening? Any unfinished business? All right, item thirteen A, then is the city manager's report, Andy.
Hey, thank you, Madam Mayor. But I too, someone else mentioned this, I want to echo. Thanks, public works, volunteers, great, Monday. Lot of stuff thrown away as usual and. The. Those who still keep coming while the public works stay mainly for kids, but for adults too, on May. Fourth, I believe, it's gonna be next Wednesday after school time. So what Jesse made parking lot full of equipment and some demos and. Some stickers and things like that. Coloring books, things like that for the public works crew to give away, the new public works director. Kind of similar to some of the topics earlier, T V F and R P G D is hosting a whole lot wildfire medication. Meeting, I wouldn't say fair, but it's June sixth, five to seven at the. The Plains Elementary School, so partners there, you're talking a lot about. Wildfire preparations, even trying to get customers prepared for. What what this year might look like, that they're in this sort of protective closures, things of that nature. We touched on U G B expansion a little bit, still planning to have that. Ordinance to the city council on June fifth for a first reading. As part of our research responding with findings to some of the letters, if we have to push it to the second meeting in June, we'll do that, but right now it's. For June fifth. A little news, apparently, I think the E D C, the Economic Development Commission would like to add two seats to their body. They have five right now and they're one of those that can actually use more. It's like they have more participation, I won't speak for those who are there most, but I think that's something that they've been wanting to do for a while. That group is active and they actually volunteered at. The old Rusty's, there's the building on Saturday and helped do some cleanup and I think they're pretty active, engaged, looking to volunteer and be more active. So they'd like to. Save the council, bless that, add two more seats and if so, we can do that, some exercise the library board one group a few years ago to add a couple members. So that more to come there. And then something lastly, something that was discovered a couple of months ago is that the senior center for years, probably back to the nineties. The resolution hasn't been paying any water, hasn't been paying a water bill to the city. When we enacted the tough, the transportation utility fee update. All of a sudden, senior centers started getting billed for that, that's because. When they got the clearance to not pay a water bill all those years ago, it's hard to even reject. So this time around with the with the creation, when you talk methodology, then the new bills were going out, the seniors said they were getting one and having. You know. Chew me up for that, I said, hold on a second. Got my attention, it's okay, there's a easy explanation there. So they haven't been paying yet, however, you should, the council should discuss that. The that's what what you would like to do, give us direction if you want to make a new command as well, and you should make that official. The resolution. So I just wanted to flag that in that for your attention as well.
Um, maybe a future agenda either, just so that we can have a, you know, good understanding of, you know, what's going during and after, just the whole process, just. What that looks like.
Yeah, I do appreciate this for us.
Yeah.
Um, that, yeah, that we're just.
Um, any counselors have any questions for Andy with his first report? That's repeated.
Andy, do we have a date for closing or ask for the red, the red house on commercial?
There's about sixty more days, we just passed the due diligence period thirty days last week. Yeah, so there's sixty, we had a ninety day period in this. To line up with tenant and a boss. Yep, so a little less than two months.
Okay, and then do we have any updates on the Glencoe opportunity here?
We're doing one tomorrow. With the proposed developer, so we'll definitely pass that on from over here. We made it clear then that. We're here and ready to work. We've talked to some state agencies about resources if necessary. The U R A is there for a reason, to help us for development. And if if the project in any way, if we need to train some of those go over whatever it is we need to do, let's just talk about that. Because last thing we knew back in February is going to get more additional bids for construction. So this is going to be our first word of that tomorrow, see how it's turned out.
And then do we, in my memory, I'm sure you might not know that there, what's the, what's the timeline? I remember extending. Extending that contract with them, what's the the end date for that, are we getting close to that date?
There is no, there is no E A right now. So that's going to be part of the discussion. Is if the bids are favorable, we can enter another agreement, if not, we have to work for another, another partner.
Okay.
Any other questions for Andy on this report?
Um, I did speak with the new owners of the building on three eleven in commercial, what was known as the Rusty Piston and. I. And and. In good faith, I said, so what's the name of your new place? Because we'd like to be able to refer this to something new as opposed to something old. And it's my understanding that the name is going to be something like Sisters and Stuff. So. I thought, you know, the sooner that they can get that on the side of the building, that way it kind of switches that mind frame of singing Rusty Piston. And give it a, something a little more positive for the community. So we had a nice little conversation about that on Saturday during. I popped down there during the clean up day, so. Nice folks, really excited to be a part of our community, so looking forward to that. Um, any council reports from meetings? Let's see, I was at the planning commission and as you, as you all know, we have the U G B coming to council in June. I don't think I need to say anymore about that. Staff already covered that. Any other reports or?
Counselor Faye?
Uh, last weekend, first meeting, I went to Washington County first meeting. It was just, it wasn't formal yet, there's still an F Y I out that's coming up and. There's a very high level, uh, budget meeting, there was, there was no little lesson bowls there. People asked us those questions because, you know, they want answers. So I took my hand up for a chat. And kind of Catholic heritage. And my main thing was about the cost of the Washington County. Shareheads. How we wanted to give some more, some more evidence that we're paying for the overhead of the businesses and the. Building and everything. But we're, we added another person, we pay for the whole thing again. Built into the hourly pay, which is about a hundred and twenty five bucks an hour. So I asked her, is there any kind of economy of scale that we get, or if you want to worry about that, can you just get a grant? Because we pay a lot of money. Well, companies we work for, we like, we work at, my neighbors work at Intel and Nike and Kaiser and Dockers. So there's a lot of money to be counted from their income, but they live here. But the big cities where they work, the business around you, a lot of help. Any kind of grant should give us, sorry, anything to do that, because people want to have these things at their homes too. And she said, oh, well, you know. Every city has to figure out whether they're police force, it's really expensive. Oh, yeah, that's great. Is there a kind of grant you get to kind of get some of that money paid back to us? Because I asked her twice, she got a little short again. Says, listen. Pretty much, I was like, I was. It's something that every city is a struggle with. There's options, but you can go private and I advise you to do that. But for the police, the risk is what it is. And we're allowing you. To do it at the cost, the cost is what it is. So that was the answer you guys would ask about that. So I don't know whether I just took it that way or maybe he was asking twice, I'm not sure.
Better digit.
And. Counselor Faye, thanks for going to that meeting, I really appreciate you being there for presenting North Plains, but. We had a meeting today, mayor's plus one, it's the Washington County mayor's plus captain, Chair Karen Jen. We talked about her budget shortfall and. You know, how they're, they're just trying to figure out how to, you know, balance their budget. And there wasn't, uh, just be straightforward with you, there's not a lot of empathy out there for cities. Basically, it's, you know, that's your budget, you figure it out and go from there. And so I wouldn't take it too personally, that's kind of the. The the attitude from the top. So I know we're gonna, we're doing the best that we can, but we have. And I guess that's the best that we can do at this point, but. We, I did share with them though, our conundrum with our local, local option levy and where we are sitting with, you know, forty eight percent of our general fund. Um, you know, going to our police, public safety and. Um, several mayors at the table were like, wow, I had no clue, like, they were, you know, shocked, you know, say, to say the least, but. Uh, it was kind of an eye opening experience for them to just hear it and to understand it, so. Yeah.
Yeah, what I wanted to get across was that people live here, but they work elsewhere and they generate money over there and we're not seeing it. So in all fairness, we should have some help with that, because we're, we're just a better community and a tax base to the public.
Any other council report with comments, Counselor Smith?
Yes. June first is ice cream, we all know that. I always set out a medal today, looking for people in Los Angeles to buy ice cream. So is there anybody here besides James and you?
I'll do those.
Okay. Most will be there.
Yeah, I replied to her.
Okay, I just were double checking.
Yeah. I know we could, um, we would see record numbers, so. We need that.
Actually, we had a deal, I'm not sure if we're gonna be able to help again or.
Yeah, well, we have other committees, we definitely should be, you know. Hopefully Cindy is working on them as well. Really appreciate all she's doing there as well.
I know, like I said, I gotta feel really busy this year.
Yeah.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yes, I do have a, a report for the Parks Department. And maybe not the Parks Department, but the board meeting I attended for Parks and Rec. And really what that was is a, is a listening session, Cindy Herschel gave a presentation. Uh, she encouraged the board to use the resources of the foundation. I'm pretty sure you're all aware that the foundation exists. Obviously, that foundation exists to help our Parks and Rec folks, so. I encouraged. Those people to engage with the the foundation. Because that's the purpose of the foundation and then. In the discussion, there was talk about celebrating the opening of. Our Jesse May Center here, and that's going to occur. On, I believe, the tenth of June, so I also encouraged them to take ownership of that. And I felt like, you know, that's, you know, that's where their love is, those, those are the folks that are on that committee for that reason, so. I, and and it looks like, at least in some of the discussion I've seen, that they're going to fully take on that, put that on as. Some sort of a ribbon cutting with the actual foundation board, so there's going to be some. You know, some assistance there for them, so I know it will go pretty well, I'm assuming we'll get some sort of an official date at some point. And the communication, and it's coming up fast, so I don't know if we may, you know. Going to make the newsletter, I guess we probably wouldn't.
Yeah, it is.
It it is good, so that's pretty much the discussion in that meeting. Uh, principally centered around, you know, the foundation and what it can do for the actual Parks and Rec folks, so. Unless there's any questions, that's pretty much it for Parks.
Thank you, Counselor Sheldon, anyone else?
Just not really nothing, just, uh. Uh, you have a flyer in your, in your, in front of you about the dead of the diamonds on the third of June. If you buy tickets to go there, the, he's, he's pretty familiar with the sun seating. If you do buy tickets, you can see with Jerry, he's the candidate, Rashna, along with Kevin. Skid wheels, they're all, they're talking about their budget and probably get a grant, you know. That is, you can get it with.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Um, and then I also attended the Washington County Committee meeting this afternoon and again, really nothing to report. Specifically to North Plains, it was very. Regionally, the region. The regional transportation system plan discussion, metro focus, trying that focus to really not, not much there for for us. Anyone else? All right. All right, hearing that, I'll go ahead and close to our city council meeting at eight forty seven. Thank you, everyone, have a good night.